I'd like to call the meeting, December 11th, 2019, Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mr. Patrizio.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mr. Height.
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the November 21st regular board meeting. Are, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion on multiple seconds. Are there any discussions, any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, please signify by your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And any changes to the agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have motion in a second. If there's no further discussion on the agenda, please signify by your approval by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Upper Valley Career Center report, we met last night, and just very uneventful meeting, so there's really nothing to report. Okay? Legislative report, Mr. Patrizio.
There is currently a proposal to change how the report cards are going to be issued. Have to wait and see what happens. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. I have nothing on hearing of the public for agenda items, so we'll move on to the treasures agenda.
Good evening. First thing, is there any questions on the November monthly fiscal reports? Next item on there is the approval of the tax budget for the 2021 year. We do this every year. This is the first resolution, and then at the January 9th meeting, I'll bring you the second resolution with the actual tax budget. Those have to be filed by January 20th. The third item on there tonight is establishing fund 536. This is Scott's favorite. We were able to receive additional funds from Title I funds that were left over, and we got to be the recipients of those. So we need to establish that fund. It's a new fund for us, and that's why we have item number four, which is approving the appropriations. Again, this is the, really will be the fourth time since July that we've approved appropriations, and that's because now we have five, money in 536 that we have to spend. So I get to take all the stuff back to the county auditor's side off one more time. So anyways, those are the items that are on there. Are there any questions about those?
Okay, if there's no questions, do we have a motion to approve the treasures agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second? And we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I want to add one more thing, and this is for our viewers more than, more than the people here. And recognizing Jeremy, he was recently, I'm not going to read it so I don't mess it up, recently achieved the Certified Administrator School Finance and Operations Certification by the Association of School Business Officials International. And this is something that's granted to highly qualified individuals who fulfill multiple requirements, including providing, improving eligibility through work experience and education, passing a comprehensive two-part exam that tests competency in accounting and school business management topics, and adhering to the ASBO International Certification Code of Conduct. And we want to recognize Jeremy, he's recognized for what we already knew, that he's a good bean counter. And he's got a really lovely plaque on, in his desk, if you want to go see it. It's got neon lights around it and everything.
That was a surprise today. It did show up, and it was a big box. It was like a...
No, we want to congratulate you and recognize you. That's not an easy thing to...
Thank you. Thanks.
Just don't let it go to your head.
You want to talk about Ed Choice? I can give you a speech.
All right, moving on. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. This week, or month, I should say, we have the high school here that's going to talk to us about their student achievement programs going out there. So Mr. Messick, you are up.
I put on your, in front of you, I put down the graduation requirements. So we are in a kind of predicament that states... We're kind of in a predicament that the state has put us in. Right now, we have three different graduation requirements for, for different grades in our school. Okay, so we have a group under, oh, here's the clicker. Class of 2020, okay, so our current seniors right now, they have one set of requirements. We're, by this time, we're pretty much familiar how that works. We have 18, you have to get 18 points on their Ohio State test or take industrial-recognized credential. I underlined here where it says senior-only programs to which you can earn credentials in one school year. That is something that we added in a couple of years ago. That's when we talked about our nursing program, our logistics programs, and the, anyway, that we worked with at the career center. So you guys are pretty familiar with that, and then our ACT or SAT scores. So this is what are currently our seniors are under. Then, after things have changed, we also have to adapt and change too. All right? Oh, I'm sorry. I want to go here. These are some of the other options that kids can do for, if they do not meet those graduation requirements. Some of the things that we've been able to do to help kids get diplomas, one of the ones that we use the most is during their 12th grade year, they can get 120 hours, and, but we, like I said, we do that with our work-based learning through Steve Grasso, so we get out and get the kids a job. And then for the other one that we use kind of rarely, is we would do this where kids could do a capstone project. In general, we reserve that for kids that can't really get out into the workplace for whatever conditions that they have. But this part, as Scott has talked to you, the other option that we make all kids do for that is they have to take the work keys exam. I remember Scott had kind of brought that up with you, which is trying to get kids ready for the workplace. So that's what we can currently do right now, and that's what our seniors are graduating under. So now, we have to start bridging some gaps here because things are changing. So the class of 2021. I took these right off of the website. So you get your basic requirements, and then you have our tests like we are. Then we have our industry credential and workforce readiness, all right, which is our programs that we already have. And then also your ACT or SAT scores. So all of that looks pretty much the same. Okay? But some of the things that we'll have to work our way through here is some of the new requirements. So we have to have kids can now, we have all these new additional things that kids can earn to get their graduation. Some of those things are, I underlined here for the passing score on the Algebra I and English, English II test. Scott, have we heard what the, what a passing score is yet?
The point of contention is the difference in the terms proficiency versus competency. The current law, the current law dictates we must be proficient. This is very specific in the wording where it says competent, and that, there's, a lot of things will hinge on the difference between those, if there is a difference at all. So that has not been said. The last I saw, it could be as late as March.
So the things that, imagine being a guidance counselor, teacher, principal, or whatever, with your junior class, the kids that, you know, they're one year and a half, year and a half away right now to their graduation, we still do not have a clear answer for those kids, how we're going to get them there. So we have to work our way through that, and it becomes very challenging, which is why it's so important we're doing some of these other programs, because they are pathways to kids' graduations. A new thing that they've added, okay, and we're going to go ahead, and Scott, am I missing anything on here on this one?
The only difference is that the work keys.
Oh, yeah.
That is one thing that is different. Current seniors from 2020 can use a minimum score on the work keys for a pathway. That goes away after this year. You, you will see work keys listed, but that is the credentialed level, and it's almost, almost double than what they need to do right now. So that's actually a pretty significant difference.
Because of that, we have to make some changes on how we deliver our work keys. We're actually working with, trying to include some of our special education department into that, into our work keys program so that we can make sure that we get stuff to all of our students. So 2022 is, I'm sorry, this, this is the, the, the bridge, all right? The last thing, I want to, oops, the last thing I want to bring up is something the state has introduced. So now, we're going to go ahead and do our competency. We're going to be able to do these options where we can get our credentials. Now, we're able to, kids can enlist into the military, all right, and that could be a pathway to graduation, and then take college-level classes. So college credit plus. So some things that, how we get our, get kids there. One, they still haven't defined what the military means. The last thing we want to do to our US military is have a bunch of kids sign up and say, "I'm going to go into the service," and then after graduation, they're out. So we're still trying to get some guidance on that. The, there sounds like it's going to end up being another test, an ASVAB score, to determine if they're eligible. Complete college coursework, so we are now starting, we actually just found out that we're going to be able to do a college credit plus English at the high school. We have Mrs. Starrett is going to be teaching that class for us, so we're bringing that in. But the college credit has to be in an English course or a math course. We do have other college credit plus classes, but they're not in English or math. So we're bringing some of those things in. We have our 12-point credentials, but the new thing here is the readiness seals. Okay, so kids have to be able to do this, and then also do these seals. And we still do not know exactly what those are yet. So we have kids, once again, in the high school, that we don't have a clear cut what their graduation requirement is. The first one is the Ohio Means Jobs Readiness Seal. It's from the ODE. What we're going to do at the high school, starting next year, is we have an advisory period. Every student that graduates from Pickla High School is going to have the Ohio Means Readiness Job Seal. So everybody's going to get that one. Industry Recognized Credential Seal, we're going to get those, like, except through the career center or some of our programs within our building. College Readiness Seal, those are your ACT and SAT scores. The Military Enlistment Seal, you could actually, under the new program, if you enlist in the military, because it's this and this, if you do it in the military, you can actually, you're done, if you just join into the military, the way that it's set up right now. Science Seal, so one of the things that they're doing is they're starting to eliminate tests. We're going to lose the ELA1 test. Okay, so now we often take as ELA2 in the sophomore year. There is still, we're still trying to figure out about geometry. They're talking to us that, that we're going to not have to do geometry, but we have to give that test here in April, and we still don't know yet. So we're still working through that part of it. But the other test, the American History Government, will all still be taken. So if kids hit a proficient in, in some of those, those tests, they can get a citizenship seal. The biology test and some other things that they can do, they can get the science seal. Get an honors diploma, you can get a seal. The Seal of Biliteracy, we don't know what that is yet. We believe it has something to do with a, taking a Spanish, high-level Spanish test to determine it. So by eliminating tests, but we're also still adding tests. And the Technology Seal is teaching college credit plus tech, or coding classes, which we do have. But also, there is a class that kids can take, which has not been defined yet by the state. And then we have these nice things. Here are local seals. So they can have one of these, and then, or multiple, but they can have one from this group that says Ohio, and then they have to have one from the local. Okay, and we get to determine those. So obviously, that's going to end up being approved by you, and we'll put that stuff together. Community Service Seal, we're starting a class, actually, where it's going to be, kids are going out, and it's going to be public relations, community relations. We're going to start that class, and they'll be able to get a seal if they take that class. Fine Arts and Performing Arts Seal. What we're starting to, what we're thinking about is if you're in, just use the same thing to get out of your PE requirement. If you're in it for two years, then you can get that seal. And then Student Engagement Seal, that would be activities and clubs, just like we do if you're in there for so many years. So we get to define those as a district. So they've created this for us to navigate through. I would love to give you a, a really, this is what, 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 but if I were to sit there and I could show you, I have this whole thing about all these seals, and there's this, all these red lines that say, "More information forthcoming." More information's forthcoming. So we, like I said, we don't really have a really good picture right now of what it's going to look like, but I will promise you this. We will make it look good. We'll find our way, we're, we're meeting now with curriculums from other schools, other principals, other guidance counselors, trying to figure out. All of us are trying to find that bit of information. Have you heard anything? Oh, this one person over there said this, so, you know, okay, maybe we can do that. So we're getting our way through it. We're hoping by, I would say, May, we should have a little bit more definition, at least for our junior class. We're still waiting to see what's going to happen. So it's very complicated. I went very quickly, but I gave you something to peruse through if you want to take a look at it. Okay? Do you have any questions for me?
No. Rob, what I'd like to say is, anybody watching tonight, if you have students in the high school or just in school, if you are getting frustrated with changes that are happening, the earth is moving somewhat under your feet, please contact your state representative, your state senator, the, what is it, Speaker of the House, the governor. Please, because what was it last year, we waited until almost March to know what students were going to have to do to graduate? So this is the second year in a row, and it's happened before. So please, if you're as frustrated as we are, please contact those people. It does make a difference. And just say that things need to be organized, laid out, so that the students can have a four-year plan and not come in as freshmen and change requirements three times before they graduate. It's just not fair to the students.
I can tell you this, Mr. Bostick, and I, I'll pledge this every time. If you, if our community, if we get our kids to school every single day, all right, do those things, I promise them, we will have a pathway for them to graduation. I promise. If they, if they give us the time, we'll definitely find a way to get them to graduate. So we'll work with, you know, like I said, our guides department is amazing, our staff is amazing at coming up with these things and how it's going to work. If we get them there every single day, they'll get there. We'll navigate these waters for them. So, you know.
You guys do an excellent job, yes. I totally agree with that. Thank you.
With college credit plus, will you share with them what you shared with Rotary regarding the one student that, this will be the first year we have a student that's...
Yes. We have right now, we have a student, she is a, a senior, and she is going to graduate with her bachelor's degree before she receives her high school diploma in May. So she's already got a, her four-year degree completed, and so, yeah, you can do it. She started taking classes in junior high, her college credit plus. So this is actually the first senior class that there's, there's, we're not the only ones. It's pretty cool, but we're not the only ones, you know. Um, it's pretty cool, um, but we're not the only ones, you know, that are experiencing this stuff, so you can do it.
You see a ton of kids getting their associates before they graduate. I mean, that happens all the time. I've never seen them get their bachelor's.
Right. It, it, it's...
You gotta be the right kid.
You gotta be the right kid. And there were summers involved, too. They did summers and stuff like that, and, um, um, yeah.
That kid's not really linked to us because they're not really present so much at our school.
So...
They've completed the requirements because they're dual, so they're going to get a diploma from us, but really hasn't spent a lot of time with us.
Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No problem.
I do have a question. Why is there such, not for you, I'm sorry. Uh, why is there such a delay in getting these requirements to...
They can't make up their mind.
So that's plain and simple, just that. So they don't have requirements like we do, or you do, getting things done in a timely manner so that people can get accomplished what is required.
It's very similar to what's happening with the Ed Choice. So they throw that stuff together really quick, they, they put it in at committee level, they don't have a lot of discussions about it, and then it goes out. And then, when we get a hold of it, we try to grapple with it. You're trying to meet the requirements of the state report card, and then we start giving feedback. They realize there are unintended consequences with what they put together because it was done so quickly. So then it goes back to committee, and they try to figure things out, so they change it. And then it keeps changing, and they keep trying to fix it and help it, but more unintended consequences keep developing. So, like you said, you know, we, we can get, if kids are coming to school, we can make it happen, but look at how much more they're expanding their programs, because now there are three different classes, or three different versions for four classes. So it's not just focusing on getting everybody at the school through one level, one set, it's, it's multiple types of things that they're offering now. That's the frustration most districts are facing.
Our profession also has a lot of work to do when it comes to educating our state representatives about what happens, because in an hour and 15-minute conversation with, with Representative Powell yesterday, I think I opened her eyes on multiple different fronts, and, and it's just because she doesn't know. I mean, they're expected to know a little about a lot, and so it does become, I think, difficult when you're one of those people to be able to understand everything that happens. And then when somebody knows what they're up to, and they throw something at a bill at the last minute, um, they, they don't know enough to be able to say that's, here's why this is going to be bad. And then, so we end up in these spots where we're at now, where things aren't going well, and it's because somebody thought they had a great idea, but it ended up actually having a lot of consequences to it. So I, it, it was a good conversation with her yesterday. I think that it was at least some breakthroughs on, like, what, what actually is happening to us out here in the trenches, and, and she's doing what she can do to learn and try to at least listen and pick up on what's happening. So it, we'll see how it goes. I mean, she's just one of many, but I, I think that's part of the problem, is there's just not enough people who know education who are in Columbus.
And we keep electing people that don't know what they're doing, but that's a whole nother, whole nother issue.
Starting to sound like me.
I, well. The truth is the truth, you know? We keep bringing these people in, they don't know what they're doing, and they just keep getting elected. We need to stop that, regardless of, regardless of political party.
Okay, Mr. Lyons, a bullying report.
Thank you. Twice annually, we're required to update the Board of Education on our bullying results or the results of our online reporting system. The figures that I'm going to give you are from our electronic reporting system through Public School Works. Um, and, and just for definition, for anybody who might be listening, we make a determination on whether or not it's bullying, if it meets specific criteria. Specifically, it's any intentional, persistent, repetitive, written, verbal, graphic, electronically transmitted, or physical act that a student or a group of students exhibits toward another student, and the behavior both, A, causes mental or physical harm, and is sufficiently severe that it creates an intimidating, threatening, or abusive educational environment. So when we go through the data that's generated through the system, we make a determination based on that definition. Now, the nice part about the system is, um, you've seen our numbers increase in reports over the last few years. Our principals have done a great job of getting our kids into that system, so that they're telling, telling us what's going on, and we're able to act on it. So although, um, we had 68 total reports this year, which is up by two, I think, at this point last year, and only five were actually bullying, uh, examples of bullying, but what we get is the ability to resolve conflicts that aren't bullying situations. So we're, we're funneling our kids into that system to make the reports, and what we've found is that when we don't know, that's the problem. So we encourage, when we get a call from somebody that says, my child's being bullied, please, not only make a contact, but get that information into the system so that we can respond. So all that's a lot of quick information, but again, total for the five buildings, 68 reports that have gone through Public School Works. For that, with that, uh, there were five total incidents that were actually deemed to be bullying, um, and all of those bullying cases have been resolved to this point. Now, for our principals, they follow up on those issues beyond that to make sure that something doesn't reoccur. Um, so at this point, you've got, uh, one that, that occurred at, at Spring Creek Primary, none at Washington Primary, 40 at the intermediate building, which is, again, when all those kids come together, they get to the age level that they're actively going to be in the electronic system, doing the reporting themselves as opposed to an adult, and then 19 at the junior high, um, which is up about six, uh, or seven from last year. And I asked Jeff about that, and he said they've made a real concerted effort to get those kids into the system and report, so that's been good. Um, and then eight at Pickla High School, with a result of five total for the district of actual, uh, evidence of bullying. So, and, and again, we, we get calls, um, from principals, from parents, those kinds of things, and the one thing that, that's a consistent message for everybody is that please get into the system, it's available to everybody, it's on the front page of our website, um, and, and record that information, because if there is any evidence to refer to, it's that ongoing and pervasive that we can see because we have it documented. So, um, we are currently looking for, um, options for programming to support our kids in the classroom. We've had discussions at, at team and cabinet that we can use some of our federal funding, um, to further impact our kids in a way that will be helpful for them as they're experiencing issues with other students, whether it's harassment, intimidation, bullying, those kinds of things, and also with our teachers. So, um, I'll report again in June, uh, with the totals for the year. Questions?
Do you feel like, you know, you are getting the reports now on the system better than what you're used to?
Absolutely. If you look at our history, at least in the last five years, you would see, and, and for us, Public School Works with the bullying reporting, I think, was kind of in its infancy, but now, um, you've seen the numbers go up. And, and although you don't want the bullying instances to go up, what you want to do is to have the kids report, the adults report, because like I said, we're finding things all the time in these reports that aren't meeting the definition of bullying, but we're able to take care of a situation that's clearly uncomfortable for a kiddo or a group of kiddos, and, and we want them to be able to feel comfortable and safe while they're here. So even though it may not meet the definition, the principals, the guidance counselors are able to get engaged and help the kids out. So the most important thing is that we're aware. Um, the nice part of the system is that when a bullying report actually gets submitted, um, not only does it go to the principals, but we see all of them as well. So we'll follow up with the principal and say, hey, we saw this on the system, where are you at with it? Or they'll call us and say, hey, we wanted you to know that, that we're following up, and here's what we found. Um, they put tool, uh, resources in place for kids that are actually experiencing that to make sure that it's not happening again.
If, if there's anything in the report that references, um, a threat, that is, or sometimes a kid might, might even write in something that might be happening at home. Hey, this other student told me this is happening at home. They don't have anywhere else to go, they'll report it there. If any kid's in danger, or there's a perceived danger, that company will call us directly on our cell phones. So we've received phone calls even in the middle of the night, and they'll say, this bullying report came through, there's a threat in there that seems pretty serious, we want to make sure you're aware that you don't miss it, and we can tend to it right away. And that has been a really nice feature to have on that. We, we might be in a meeting, and our phone will ring, and they'll say, this just came through. So we can call the principal right away and say, check this out, find out what's happening.
I think I asked this last year, but is there still, you can still post it on this list, right?
Yes.
How is that helpful? I mean, does just know what's going on?
I'll give you a perfect example that I just talked to Heath about the other day. Um, we had that very thing, it was anonymous, but a student's name was mentioned in the description.
Okay.
So if that doesn't happen, it, we can watch for things.
Yeah.
But we have to have something to go by. They were able to follow up because that kiddo's name was in there. There's something in there that we can follow up, or rather, they can follow up on, then we're okay. It's when you, and, and some of those 68 reports, I will tell you, are false reports. They just are. They're silly things that don't mean anything. They have to investigate, but when you get a truly anonymous with no information, the only thing that you can do is, is just be aware that somebody submitted something in, pay attention to it. But like in that case, we were able to follow up with the student that was mentioned, so...
Well, even if we look, if you look at something that looks like it's silly, you know, it, it may not be to the student, so...
Yeah, and, and my thing is, when I say that, I mean, I love to eat, uh, orange pie or something like that. I mean, those kinds of things, you just push them all the way out, obviously, but, but anything that refers a potentially serious incident, even though there's not a name attached, they're going to investigate, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing I would like to report is, Ben Gover is an alumni student of ours, and on his own, um, contacted the chamber and started working through an idea that he had, um, because he passed some students waiting at a bus stop and noticed they didn't have right coats or hats and so on. So he started working with the chamber, who reached back to me, and, um, he has done quite a collection now of coats, hats, scarves, gloves, mittens. He's got some money, um, put back, and, um, there is more that we'll be collecting, there, the chamber's collecting until the 20th of December, and they're going to turn all that over to our bus drivers. Our bus drivers, every morning, pull up at bus stops and see students that may or may not have what they need to stay warm. And if they identify a pattern, or they ask a student, why don't you have a coat? And they say, I don't have one, we're going to make sure those kids get what they need to stay warm. So I, I just thought that was a great, great thing that he, on his own, did that. He reached out to the chamber, got it started, it's really taken off now. Some clubs are meeting, and their dues that week are hats, gloves, and scarves, and those kinds of things, and, um, I understand he's got quite a collection, so we're, we're very thankful for that. And again, if anybody's interested in supporting that, they can do, um, donations at the chamber all the way up to the 20th of December.
Good.
And that's it.
All right, superintendent's agenda.
I'd like to recommend the board approval of the attached list of technology equipment for disposal and removal from the inventory of Pickla City School District, and as always, our, our tech people pick through that, um, pretty hardly, and make sure everything's out of there that we can use, because we do reuse a lot of those parts. I'd like to recommend the board approval of the attached list of donations. We have some, um, money that's been donated by the Miami Valley Steel, Bob Lyons, and Miami Valley Bassmaster, so we appreciate those donations to support student programs. I'd like to recommend the board approve the attached list of grants. We see grants from the Pickla Community Foundation, the Pickla Education Foundation, and awesome Pickla. So we always appreciate the support that they give us, and, um, that, those, those grants go to some great, great ideas that our teachers come up with, our educators to support students in our district.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion. Please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. And the personnel agenda, Mr. Lyons.
Very, very short this evening, um, which is great. I'm going to talk about two, two things briefly. Uh, number seven, again, we approve subs almost every month, uh, a few, but we could always use great people who want, want to come in and work with kiddos. The requirement is that you have a four-year bachelor's degree, doesn't matter if it's in education or not, you're, you're welcome to, to, uh, not have an educational background, but you're interested in working with, with our young people, and you have to, uh, have an interview with me. Um, and then we'll make a decision on employment for, for substitutes, but definitely always looking for good people in, in those areas. And then the volunteers, I always thank our volunteers, we encourage people to get engaged. Just for clarity, um, if you're going to go on an overnight trip or something like that, um, or a field trip outside of the school building, you will have to come down to the board office and get fingerprinted. If you're coming in to work in your child's classroom, um, or, or something to that degree, we have the Raptor system, you must have your ID to be able to get into the building to do those things. If you're coming in just to see a program, um, spelling bee, whatever it might be, you don't need to go through either of those processes. You're just going to come in and enjoy the kids in the general area. So again, if you have any questions about that, anybody's feel, feel free to, to give me a call, but, um, outside of that, personnel agenda, if you have any questions on, on that tonight, um, I'll take those.
Any questions? Hey, if not, do we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second? A motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There's no old, there's no old business today. Uh, on new business, we do have some things we need to take care of, um, before we move into the new year. You've gotten a list of potential dates for, um, board meetings for the coming year. Are there any on there? For the June meeting, could, do we, do we want to move that June meeting?
Is it too early to get Dwayne there?
That would, that would be pretty early, or we can have Tony run the meeting.
She's usually a really light load then. Feel very confident Tony could do it if you were okay with that?
You okay with that?
Absolutely.
Let's load the meeting up now.
Thanks.
And notice that the July meeting has moved from Thursday to, uh, 22nd, that's a Wednesday. We'd already done that one. Um, how about the December meeting? And that, that involves Jeremy.
Melinda can be here, or, um, we can move the date, either direction.
I would say move it up a week if we can. Getting close to the holidays with that one, and...
Yeah, I mean, it'd be much easier, this would, I mean, this is about as early as we can get a meeting is where we're at, and it'll be similar to this timeframe next year, so I don't know that that would be a problem.
So, well, the, the week earlier would be the 10th.
And November would be the 19th, so, terrible.
Okay, now, we don't, we don't, we, we, we have, we do these at the next meeting, but we, we need to think, be thinking about these now. So do we want to go to the, we want to go to the 10th?
Say, Steve.
I tried, we got, we got...
All right.
Frank, Frank doesn't care.
Frank's easy.
All right, so we're going to keep the, the 25th, and then, like I said, we, we have to approve these at the next meeting.
So look at the 10th, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, I will, I'll circulate, uh, before our organizational meeting, who's doing, who's, who's got these positions now, so we can, so we look at those, um, we'll talk about those. We'll look at those, uh, we do that at the organizational meeting as well. Okay? Other thing on there, um, to, to start the organizational meeting, we need to appoint a president pro tem. Um, probably easy way to do that, since I'm a lame duck, I'm, I, I, I can do that, and then the next person just comes in.
Okay.
So if you're all right with that?
I'm fine.
You're fine, you're fine with that? You can carry.
See if we can get him to do an eye-glass.
Yeah, great.
Okay, and we'd set the date for the organizational meeting as the 9th.
We need to vote on that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please signify, signify by saying aye.
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 And we had already set the, uh...
January 9th.
January 9th. So that's okay with everybody. Do we need to approve that, or is that already done?
Yep.
Okay, do we have a motion to set the organizational meeting for January 9th?
So move.
At 4:00 P.M.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. That's, that's taken care of.
Okay, Mr. Hiddle.
Item number four, this is recommending the appointment of Andy Height and Bob Luby to the Upper Valley Career Center governing board for a three-year term of office commencing on January 1st, 2020, and expiring on December 31st, 2022.
So move. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Next item on there is the sale of 950 South Street, the old Favorite Hill property. We conducted a auction on Tuesday. We received a bid from Bill DeGee and his wife for $125,000, which is the market value of that property. And so tonight, that would just be approving that sale at $125,000 and closing that up.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale.
And we got a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, probably better call the roll on this one.
Mr. McInnes, Mr. Ford, Mr. Patrizio, Mr. Bostic, Mr. Height.
Aye. Motion carries. And the last one.
The last item is recommending the approval of RDA associates as the architect, engineer of the renovation projects at the Pickle High School and the Pickle Junior High. We went through a request for qualifications. We posted on the website. We put it in the newspaper. We invited multiple architects. We received those, their qualifications in. We sat down, went through a scoring system, and RDA came out with the highest score. Garmin Miller was a close second to that. And so my recommendation is to move forward with RDA and associates. They started the 500 wing and it does make some logical sense to have them continue working through the project. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this?
So move.
A motion. Yeah, I guess. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for that approval. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. A motion carries. And I have nothing on hearing of the public for non-agenda items. We do have something else tonight, yeah.
We do. Tonight is Frank's last board meeting. And on behalf of the staff and students, I would like to say thank you very much for all the work that you've done, the time you've dedicated. You have been a very, very great board member. We're very pleased to have had you on our team. And we know you're going to continue to be a great supporter of us. So that's, that's the only consolation we have in losing you is that you're going to, you're going to continue to be there for us.
I will. And I just want to say thank you to all the board members, superintendents, the treasurers I've served with, all the staff. Really enjoyable. I decided not to run. I actually was having a conversation with my dad. He says, well, I was debating on it. He says, well, what would you do now if you ran? And I said, really, Dad, I like the superintendent. I like the treasurer. I like the board. I said, staff's wonderful. I said, the only thing I really want to make sure gets done is the high school. And he looked at me and he says, the high school will get done, Frank. And that was basically it. And, you know, Pickle City School has just wonderful people working for it. They have a great board. I've worked with a lot of member, board of members, and they've all been wonderful. They've all brought different, different ideas and different experiences of life. And it's been very, very good for the school system. Mr. Frazier will bring another, a new view. And I think it's important that you get that on boards. And so I wish him all the luck and I wish the board all the luck in the next couple of years.
Just a couple of things I'd like to share more for our, our audience that'll be watching this than us. But, uh, you know, obviously we recognize you, you know, you've, you've served eight years. And, you know, eight years is a long time. But in those eight years, we need to look back and think about what all we've accomplished in those eight years. You know, you came on, we completed the new buildings. We've opened three new buildings. We got rid of six aging buildings that had served the district well. But it was time. We've relocated, relocated the board office into our own building. We've recently got the transportation department into one of our facilities. So we're not leasing any, any property, any, any, any longer. One of the things I've always appreciated, you're obviously a numbers guy, and you look at that financial report.
Absolutely.
Pretty closely. And, and you ask, ask a lot of the questions that helps the rest of us understand that. So, you know, so I don't know who's going to pick up that slack. And the other thing I noticed with the numbers, when we've looked at levy campaigns, you know, when you predict the percentages, you're pretty darn close.
There was a trick to that.
Could be a chairperson for the next round. There's our chairman.
You know, those things, you know, you know, we're, we're going to miss that. And, you know, one of the things I've also noticed, and I think people need to realize if they've never picked this up when they've watched our show, you know, you always look at things from the perspective of what's best for the kids. You've always put the kids first. And, and we, we appreciate that. And I know that, and even though you're not going to be on the board anymore, and Dwayne's already mentioned this, I know you're going to be one of our biggest and best supporters.
Thank you very much.
Of the district. And so on behalf of the whole board, we want to thank you for, for your eight years of service. We, we appreciate that.
I really appreciate it. And it's very nice and very kind, but there were a lot of people that did all this work. And it wasn't just one. And it, and this board has been very good. The superintendents are wonderful. Even Tony over there has been pretty good.
He has broad shoulders.
I can take it. Well, I really appreciate that.
All the staff and students here. Thank you so much for that. I mean, did not have a pencil here. I'd like to spring creep and try to make sure you got this from the staff and students.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for backing us.
It's fair time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Wonderful.
Kelly's coming up, right?
And Kelly's going to be your next numbers person.
Nope, nope, absolutely no pressure. All right, the only other thing we do, we, before we, during, we will, we will be going into executive session for the purpose of appointment, employment dismissal, disempowerment, promotion, demotion, or compensation of employee and student as permitted under Highway 521.22. And we will not be taking any action when we come out. So do we have, and before we, before we do go into executive session, our next meeting is the organizational meeting, the 9th at 4:00 P.M. here. So do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we're in executive session.